...and similarly have not responded to the municipal civil infractions citations resulting in order holding defendant in civil contempt of court issued on February 24th, 2011, and whereas the city management also provided alternate service to the property owners by publishing the notice in the Somerset Gazette on March 7th, 14th, and 21st, 2011, and whereas it has been more than 10 days since the notification of the property owners, and whereas Chapter 82 authorizes City Council to issue a dangerous building declaration in such cases without the necessity of a hearing, now therefore it is hereby resolved that the Troy City Council declares the residence of 2651 Parasol dangerous to the life, health, property, or safety of the public and/or occupants as set forth in Chapter 82, Section 108, Point 1, of the Troy City Ordinance. Be it further resolved that City Management is hereby directed to send notification of this dangerous building declaration by certified mail to the property owners as listed on the City of Troy's most recent assin record, Jajit and Manpreet Sandhu, providing them with 21 days to demolish the building and make the property safe, and be it further resolved that if the property owners fail to comply with this directive, then City Management is directed to take any action necessary to demolish the building, the cost of which shall be the responsibility of the property owners and which can be collected in any manner authorized by law.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Potem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Howellack.
Do we know if this property is free of liens? In other words, is there a mortgage of any sort on this property?
Fleming?
Mr. Havelak?
Yes.
Howellack?
Yes.
Oh, Mrs. Bloom? Motion passes. Next, we have the lease agreement with Galton Incorporated, AKA Camp Ticonderoga Restaurant
Mayor, I can just provide some information. Certainly, all of the lien holders would have been notified as well, and so they have
at Solon Glen Golf Course, and I'd like to move the resolution as printed.
been provided notification if they are lien holder.
I guess my other, I mean, I have no problem with the resolution, believe me.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Potem Kerwin.
I'm just curious as to whether or not we're ever going to be reimbursed for the, for
Oh, no, that's against Ms. McGinnis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
this, or if we're gonna end up with title to this thing.
Councilwoman McGinnis, ears aren't working right. Thus your question about the lien holders? And for discussion of the item, I'd like to indicate that we have had a very positive
Yeah, it is. I imagine that if these people aren't boarding up the house, they're probably not paying
relationship with the folks that have owned Camp Ticonderoga for, is it 15 years, Mrs.
taxes on it, and it'll probably go to the county eventually. Is that kind of what's going on? I mean, have they paid taxes?
I think that if there is a lien, it is for taxes.
Bloom?
Actually, Mayor, I was going to make sure that you were reading from the amended It's on the property. I don't have that information handy, but that's probably a good conclusion. one, the one that is on the table, because the resolution is slightly different, so I want to make sure that the correct resolution is...
There's probably not value to make us whole anyway, so I was just curious.
Thank you for calling that to our attention. We've had several, well, quite a few things here on the table.
That's all. Thank you.
Any others? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
Is it a single?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Final paragraph, spin it.
Yes.
Slater?
Pardon?
Yes.
It's the item I H.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Thank you. I've got it here. I think, no? I didn't get a copy of that one. Well, it was, okay, thank you. The, my point is that this would be an agreement that is, serves us well, and the fact that I have, that has worked out well for us over the years, being that this is at the golf course. Other members of council wish to say anything?
Just agree.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right. The vote then, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. I note that the owners are here, and I know that they wanted to just say a couple words after the approval. How are you?
Good.
Come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, councilpeople. I just wanted to very quickly specifically thank Stu, is he here?
Stu Alderman?
Yes. Stu, John, Mark, Susan Lancaster, Carol Anderson, for their prompt, professional, and considerate way in which they worked out these lease agreements with us. It was a little bit unexpected, but very much appreciated, that in this process, we felt like we were Delphi or Somerset Mall, and we know we're not. We're just a small business, but it's that type of attention and consideration that has made it a pleasure to be in this city and to have a small business in this city. And I want to give a sincere thank you to the council members and also City Management for helping making us successful for 15 years.
And you've done a great job there at Camp Ticonderoga, and that's why, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to I-9, which is the Medigo Service Agreement.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Fleming?
Resolved that the request for funding and the amount of entire municipal and community credits transferred from SMART for Troy Medigo Plus for physical years 2011, 2012, and the funding agreement between the City of Troy and Troy Medigo Plus covering July 1st, 2011, through June 30th, 2012, are hereby approved, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the documents, and copies shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Howellack, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-10 is the Amendment to Chapter 20 of the Troy City Code, Water and Sewer Rates.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
I move the corrected resolution.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Potem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the corrected resolution. I-10. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-10 is the Amendment to Chapter 20 of the Troy City Code, Water and Sewer Rates.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
I move the corrected resolution.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Potem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-11 is the Community Center Catering, rescind the city's application, and then I-12 will have the Community Center Caterers Liquor Application.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Fleming?
Resolved that the City of Troy withdraw its application to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for a Class A C quota license for the Troy Community Center, 3179 Libranoy Road, Troy, Michigan, 48084.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? Of course, we know the reason we're doing this is because we had to apply until we had someone in line for the liquor application, and once they have their approval, we don't need to have ours. The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-12, Community Center Catering to the Caterers Liquor Application.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Resolved that the city recommends approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission of a Class C quota liquor license for Alpha Donnie, Inc., DBA Encore Catering for the Troy Community Center at 3179 Libranoy, Troy, Michigan, 48084, Oakland County, above all others. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howellack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellack?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-13 is Approval of a Communications Strategy, and I note that in the printed copy of the agenda, there's A, B, or C, and then on the table, folks, we have a yellow resolution that Mr. Zerlike has presented to us with some changes, so I'm gonna call on him to clarify, so we know where we are on this. Mr. Zerlike?
Sure, there's essentially two changes that I am proposing. One is in the second paragraph under Option A, which indicates at a cost of up to $9,500 per month, so that if City Council approves of the strategy, Mr. Sarpolos would submit his billing requests to Cindy Stewart, who would analyze them to assure that the scope of work being billed was indeed performed. The contract has also been modified to reflect that. And the second change is that, as opposed to the manager deciding whether or not to proceed with the strategy after six months, since this was a council-initiated idea, this kind of strategy, what I have in the third paragraph is to have myself and staff conduct a six-month review to assure the goals of that strategy are being met, and then make a recommendation to council at that time in six months. Council would consider if they wished to proceed to continue the contract or to let the contract expire. So it's not a $200,000 contract essentially that you're approving. It's a month-to-month contract of up to $9,500 per month. The funding is not in my left-hand drawer. We had a economic development specialist position that is not being filled.
And so you're recommending the Resolution A, that is on the yellow sheets that are in front of us with the changes?
I'm recommending the resolution that's attached. It's up to City Council. I tried to follow your direction to expedite a strategy. We, this is a professional service, does not need to be bid, however, we spoke to three firms, and Mr. Sarpolos was superior in terms of what he advanced as not only a communications strategy, but also an economic development strategy for the city. Mr. Sarpolos is also here, if he wants to come out of...
He's over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's in here.
He's out of my field of vision, I'm sorry. If you have any questions about the scope of work, I think it would be more appropriate to ask Mr. Sarpolos directly.
Okay, but before we call on him, I would like some, for us to make some comments about why we feel that this is something that we must do in hiring a outside consultant. Previous to the past couple of years, we had a community affairs department where we had staff members of up to, what, four people at one point, four or five, that really handled all of our communication kinds of things, and of course, consultation with the manager's office and those that need to be. Since that time, we've cut back so that we have a half-time community affairs director, the other half of our time is spent with the police department, and so we are no longer able, because of the number of staff depletion, to do the kinds of communication that council had been asking about, and that the ICMA report indicated that we should do with our community. Am I enunciating that correctly, Mr. Zerlike, giving enough clarification? Would you like to add?
Very well stated. And to add some numbers to your statement, to essentially quantify it, by the time we're done with the ERA program and our layoffs and employees that have left to take other employment, I think I'll be down about 175, 180 full-time people compared to our high point of about 500 people that we had in 2006, '07, and essentially, we're doing less with less. One of my employees said we're going from a big city to a small city, and when you do less with less, even at the department head level, we all have to become generalists. And so we're going essentially from customized service to a customer service philosophy. And should the council want to have a specialized service, we frankly don't have the staff to perform that function any longer. If Mrs. Stewart had eight other people like she had five or six years ago, it would be a no-brainer, but she essentially, as you mentioned, is by herself now in that regard. And so if the council wants to have a communications strategy, we'd have to either hire someone and make them an employee, or have a consultant perform the work for us, and on a month-to-month basis decide if it's worth it or not.
I note that during public comment, there were quite a few people that were concerned, and of course extrapolated it out to a larger number because they were thinking they were gonna be doing this over a two-year period. But they didn't use any examples of other cities or other governments that have used a communications strategy to actually show the positives of a situation which will help. And I started thinking about that, especially when I got the phone call from Christina Papa George at home, and then, of course, she came to speak tonight. I remembered that her husband, Senator John Papa George, voted in favor of the Pure Michigan proposal ads, which was House Bill 4160, to spend more on tourism industry subsidies, as well as 34 of his other colleagues in the Senate, it passed 35 to 1 to do that. And so then I checked, and I was curious as to how Mari Nolenberg had voted on that. He too voted in favor of that, and that passed the House by a vote of 95 to 13. That was in February of this year. And the reason that I bring this up is that both the House and Senate were very aware at that time about the budget problems that the state was having. They felt that the money expended for the Pure Michigan program, which many people have seen, of course, you see the ads on TV and the printed, I got something in the mail a week or so ago from them, they even, they have a website, they felt that this was actually spending money in order to promote a very positive thing about Michigan, and that is our tourism, our state, and the positive things that we have to offer. The reason I use this as an example for my colleagues is that this is the kind of thing that will help stabilize Troy with the residents and with the businesses and with people that are looking, if they want to come here for various kinds of things, if it's done in a positive manner. So even though it is a monthly expenditure, which would be under the city manager's budget, it would be monitored by the council and by staff to indicate that it's promoting the kinds of things that are in a positive direction. And this is to cover everything in the city, not one item. For example, we have a wonderful recreation program here in the city. We've had to cut back on programs, and we've had to say that they have to be self-sustaining by monies that, you know, people sign up for the programs and pay their fees, et cetera. We have wonderful community facilities, we have our fire department, our police department, all the things that true cities offer. And because we've had to do so many cuts, we've been talking in the negative for so long that we're forgetting to talk about the positives, why this city is a place where all of us chose to come, and why we want to see it be promoted. And when I was looking at the Michigan Municipal League latest magazine, lo and behold, I opened it up, and there's all these cities, and they're promoting the things that they think are great about their city. And they're not only doing it in the Michigan Municipal League magazine, but they're doing it with actual programs. So now I should be quiet and let some of my colleagues talk about this item.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
We've really talked about the idea of a comprehensive strategy for a long time, but in the background, you'd find this on page 97, I just want to point out that it does talk about our visions and goals, and the scope of work includes implementing the vision and goals, which we developed, development and implementation of an overall media outreach, which includes social media, as well as our website, print, and so on, categorization and development of concise communication tools, a website evaluation, again, to be more user-friendly, ongoing research, a collaboration expansion of stakeholder coalition. When we had our community engagement sessions over and over and over again, and you all received copies of the notes, it was communication, communication, communication. That's where we were falling down. We recognize it. This is the first proactive thing that we have done, is look at communication from all levels, and trying to be our best in stepping forward on this. Troy has had a black eye. There has been some bad media, despite the fact that we are doing a lot of innovative things, and that we worked together quite well on the communication strategies with the community conversations. But that's just one aspect, and that part is over. I would support tonight Option A, because I would like to see these things accomplished within the next few months. I'm pleased that the idea of that long-term has been removed from the table, and now we're looking at recognizing how we can move together with vigor on these pieces, and I think it's time that we do it. Stop being in that reactive mode, where all we do is get hit and hit again, but talk about the good things that are happening in Troy, and how we are moving forward with innovation and with excitement about a positive future.
Further?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I agree with everything that's been said, except moving forward, quite honestly, Mr. Sarpolos with Target Insight. I have some huge reservations about that. I see this proposal, and quite honestly, from a communication professional, if I had been evaluating this for business, I would have quit reading it, two-thirds of the way through, because of the grammatical and typographical errors in it. It does not give me confidence, and there were some in the earlier report we received from you as well. So that started me in a negative thought. The first tab talks about implementing a communications strategy. I never found a strategic plan in this document. I found a laundry list of tactics and tools. I never found a plan. Your previous survey told us that trust with this council and administration was a significant community issue. I do not see that addressed in this plan. The city manager says that there's an economic development component in this plan. I see the business community mentioned in this plan. I see partnerships and other tools talked about. I don't see an integrated marketing communications strategy here. That's my issue.
Further comments? Councilwoman McGinnis, did I see a signal?
Yes. A couple of comments that I have. I think that everything that's listed in the memo and some of the things that Mayor Potem Kerwin went over in terms of what we're looking to accomplish with a scope of work that's agreed upon are absolutes. I think that there are things that we've heard time and time again from the community that need to be done. I think we've got a lot of good information that we've gathered over the last year in terms of trying to move forward, trying to revamp the way that the services are delivered, trying to restructure the organization and make a lot of very big changes, and I think that the time is ripe for us to come up with a communications strategy above and beyond what our produced staff can handle on their own. I think it's very important to note that the community affairs department is shrunk, and now essentially, there's one half of a position that's used for all of the other city departments, and another half that's doing work with the police department. We need to have something that's gonna address all of the changes that are going on in every single department, and I think that that is gonna take some specialization to allow us to do the things that are listed here, you know, website evaluation, ongoing research, implementing social media strategy, working with economic development. Essentially, if we're going to be giving up that person that we had working in our economic development department, that we've decided as a council is important and important tool for us to utilize going forward, we'd better make sure that whatever we're doing in its place is gonna address those needs that we have in terms of promoting economic development. I think that what's listed here is absolutely what we need to accomplish. I guess I did have some reservations in terms of the steps that are gonna be taken to get to this point, to get these things accomplished. I know that it's not required, that goes out for bid, those requirements are not necessarily gonna be provided, and I do believe that several members, several department heads, worked in conjunction on this, trying to come up with someone that they felt comfortable. I wish we had some more information about that, because I'm concerned, making a commitment that essentially, it's month-to-month, but it is a bigger term than that. We know that it's going to take more than one month, or, you know, more than a few months, to see these types of big changes. And so we are signing on for something that is potentially longer than one month or two months. And so I would like to see something that really specifically addresses how we're gonna accomplish some of these things that are in here. And if that comes from staff talking to us about it, and maybe some of the discussions that we didn't get a chance to be a part of, maybe that's important, because otherwise, you know, I just, I'm not quite sure that there's enough here that gives me confidence that we can get from A to B with what's here. I think that it's something that we need to do. I think that it's something that we've been pushing to do. I'm glad that we're having an active discussion, that we're seeing potential partnerships here before us today, and if this is, if Target Insight is the company to get this done, then I would absolutely support that. I think I just need more information on how we're gonna do that.
I need to ask a question here, Mr. Zerlike. There were three companies that were looked at, and did they all submit proposals? Because there was some question about the fact that we didn't go out for bids, but we actually looked at various companies that were available, and some companies that may not be interested in doing it. Is that correct?
Right. Again, this is a professional service. We didn't have to talk essentially to more than one company, but we wanted to get a sense from our own, from our own application, of what essentially would constitute an effective communications strategy. And so there were three different approaches. The approach that we thought was best was offered by Mr. Sarpolos, and I really don't want to speak on Target Insight's behalf. I think when all the questions are advanced, Mayor, through you, about concerns, pros and cons, that you give Mr. Sarpolos a chance to respond.
Yeah, I'll be happy to do that. I just want the council to have a chance to, you know, at least ask their questions. Councilman Slater, did you want to talk next?
Yeah, I came here tonight not in favor of Option 1, basically because...
Councilman Slater, did you want to talk next?
Yeah, I came here tonight not in favor of Option A, basically because I didn't feel I had enough. I was leaning towards Option B with some hopes that we could cut down 120 days to something more manageable for us, but having heard everything discussed tonight, I just wouldn't feel comfortable with Option A at this point. I really think we need to do more of what Option B is and...
The new Option A? You're not comfortable with the new Option A?
I'm not. I wasn't, I wasn't comfortable coming here tonight with either options, with the money. I was encouraged when I heard that we were going to use the money from the position of the economic development position to cover the costs, so I felt better about that and that the amount, the maximum amount would be somewhere around $50,000. I was just hoping that maybe we could come here tonight and get more towards Option B where we whittle down 120 days to maybe a more manageable number. I think that's, that's too much time to let go by, but I'm not, I'm not in favor of moving on Option A myself at this point. And I look forward to hearing from Mr. Sarpolos to answer some questions that have been raised tonight.
Any others? Councilwoman Fleming?
You alluded to the Pure Michigan Campaign, which I think is a great campaign that our state's supporting. But there was, I think in that, there was a definite payback. What we're missing here, I think, is a payback. We're looking at spending a lot of money, but there's no definite way to calculate a payback on this. It's unknown, so that makes us all nervous. And I was curious, you know, and you've answered to why there wasn't a bidding process, so we've got some insight on that. But just curious if this undertaken, if this has been undertaken by Target Insight with any other cities, and maybe we can learn about that from Mr. Sarpolos later. But I'd be curious if there are examples and if we can really come up with a payback, a definite payback with targeted key measurement indicators, we would know whether we've been successful or not in a short period of time.
Councilwoman Harak, did you want to say anything before I call on Mr. Sarpolos?
Not at this moment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Folks ready for, for Mr. Sarpolos?
Uh huh.
You've heard our discussion, our questions and comments, so...
Well, they're all very good questions, and I think the important thing to understand is that a strategic plan is something that we'd be working with the city and the city departments. As you look at other cities, you do any web search itself, some of these take two years of involvement. Matter of fact, I was looking at one city, City of Springfield, spent $150,000 on their own webpage upgrade. That was not something I see necessary for you to do. You talk about payback, Councilman Fleming. In our work with other firms, and remember, I've switched firms over time, is the fact, one thing we measured in City of Lansing is the number of people wanting to leave the city. When I presented to you several weeks ago, we saw that you've lost several thousand families, young families, working families. So one of the goals is to reduce that trend of people leaving the city. So that's very key. The bottom line is that in any strategic plan, there's a meeting, there's going to be a, would require a communications audit, an audit of every department. What are they doing? What are their plans? Is there unison between all of them? Not only an audit of the unison of the departments, but what is happening in the business community? My engagement with the Chamber of Commerce and other groups, they're going in a different direction. They have different views. So the other factor is, are we speaking as one? Is the chamber speaking with you? Is the city, are the departments? The other thing in an audit, the fact is to evaluate, is how effective are we using new communications technology? You have fewer people doing the job, fewer people communicating. In some cities, each department has their own communications director. Okay? We don't have that. So the goal here is the fact, can we use Twitter? Can we use Facebook? Can we use other communication techniques to reach out? The other thing that's very key here is that we met with, in the tutorial, when we had the study session, the fact is that we learned that those who are middle-aged and younger do not participate in city government. They don't participate. Your senior citizens, your retirees are very active, both at the polls and expressing their opinion. So the goal of any communications strategy is to engage the younger population. So part of the evaluation is the metrics. You probably have not seen my fuller proposal, my original one, which is about nine or 10 pages. We talked about some additional, other additional benchmarks, to actually create benchmarks. And those benchmarks are the fact are increasing engagement. Okay? Because I do believe in accountability. As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, you talked to the city manager, I was not very eagerly, openly, originally to even put in a proposal, but I was asked to put one in to consider it based on what I've learned about the city issues. It was my recommendation about the six months, was my recommendation to build metrics. But some of the issues of metrics have to be defined in the evaluating of the actual audit, what is needed in the city and the departments. I have not done that yet, okay? And usually of knowledge of the seat, I've worked in the villages with this Troy library in the past, I've worked in the villages with the school board system, I've worked in other cities with the other firms, it was like Epic and Mary, which I founded. But all those things, you do create benchmarks. And some of those benchmarks are going to take time. One of the things, the fact is, we have to do an earned media strategy here. In many other cities, they have billboards, they have radio spots, they have TV ads. If you look at the Detroit Regional Chamber of Commerce, who's spent millions on their 1D program, okay? They stopped that because it was all paid media, they weren't doing grassroots. This plan here has to be based on earned media. How do we do that? Through outreach, using the tools within the cities, using your employees. One of the things in the fuller plan, I talked about talking to our employees, because one of the things, your first face of who the city is, is your employees. What are they saying to their neighbors? What are they saying to business about their feelings about working here and staying here? So like in any other business, this is a business, there has to be an evaluation. Based on that evaluation, that's within the more full strategic plan. What are we going to do first, second, third, fourth, and fifth? That has not been done. You've laid out a vision, but that's just a vision. The tools and the methods to get there have yet to been done. That's where the evaluation would be conducted, okay? And based on those, like the governor, you create your own dashboard, okay? Maybe not on the webpage, but the bottom line is looking at what are the metrics we need to measure? Is it increased communication? Is it story coverage? Is it increased people active in the community? That is the game plan. And a final, probably a strategic plan after all that evaluation's done could be as much as 30 or 40 or 50 pages of done, but it's usually done after an evaluation is done. Each department have its own messages, its own themes, but also working together as a group. So the reason I wanted to produce the original nine-page, that was shrunk down to three pages, because I was beginning to shrink it down to something that I was asked specifics, what are the core deliverables that somebody could evaluate on a project by project basis, okay? My partner, Dan Jankowski, is here. He's worked in communications with the General Motors and other entities over the years, and I have other people that I'll be working with. It's not just me, okay? But the goal here is the fact is that the original part is an accountability of what's happening in the city and the department. That's an audit. What is everybody saying or not saying? Then taking, looking at the negatives that you're hit on a regular basis, can we create talking points, okay? On the other side of the fact, there's some comments, the fact is, my contract, if it was, were approved, is very specific. I'm not allowed to participate in political activities. I cannot have any involvement in the August election, I can have no involvement in the November election. That is off the table. Okay? Because in my business, I have not done partisan politics since 1992, okay? Because I'm out of that business. I'm not a registered lobbyist. In order to be a lobbyist in the state, you have to register with the state. I've been a registered lobbyist for most of the year now, okay? Because of my past clients, okay? But the bottom line is develop a plan, it first has to be a communication audit, okay? Developing the needs and what are your priorities. Secondly, engaging your stakeholders, how are they working? So that's basically, you create a full plan based after engaging everybody and basically institutional research. What's happening on the inside? Where is the duplication? Where is the miscommunication? That all has to be done. Then develop the full plan. The goal of nine, six months or whatever the fact, the fact you can begin to create that plan, begin to initiate things. Your core talking points that's based on your vision, beginning and engagement of the other groups, beginning to see if they'll invest with you on your priorities, okay? Begin to work with, matter of fact, I met with the police chief here, some things that I had recommended almost a month ago, he's beginning to use in communication outreach, using social media. So that's the process. You don't start with, here's my plan, because the fact is, how can I present you a plan when the audit hasn't even been done? It's like when you go to your doctor, he doesn't say, here's your drugs, until he does a physical on you or begins to do analysis. Then he makes a regime of therapy, either medicine or physical therapy. That's what has to be done, okay? But I like, yes, Michigan, you know, Pure Michigan is great, but they have millions of dollars to spend. A strategy has to be developed based on your lack of money to advertise. So it has to be through your stakeholders, through your employees, through your departments on one single message. That one has to be developed. But right now, you know, I was on Mackinac Island last week, your business community have different perspectives of what they want you to become and what they want you to do. That would be in conflict of you, so part of my purpose here, in this project, if you read my whole original proposal, I'm not a consultant, I'm actually working as an employee. Okay? I'm not just going to sit there and advise someone what to do, I'm actually involved in doing the work, along with my partner and other people that work for me. Engaging the stakeholders, meeting with your employees, meeting with your departments, what are the common methods and themes, developing an internal survey. I don't know, when's the last time you've done an employee survey, how they feel about the city and what they're telling their neighbors and friends? Okay? It probably has not done. Well, since one of my projects would be, is the fact, is to do that, okay? Because that's an internal mechanism, there'd be no additional charge, that's built into the cost of the contract. The 9500 would include the upgrading, improvement of the website. That's not an initial billable thing, that's an advisement unless there's some things that have to be purchased. So why isn't there a 65-page plan? There's been no audit, there's been no evaluation, there's been no meeting with people, the stakeholders, and what are the issues and the problems? And how can you more effectively use your methods you already have? Okay? You know, I talked with the chief, maybe he needs to begin how to use Twitter, Facebook or something like that on the beat, or the outreach. That I do not know at this time. All I can share with you is what has worked in other communities, what are the strategy and tactics, what does it take to develop an issue management team, that type of thing. But the key thing is, I will not be involved in any elections, August or November, as I was accused by some of the people in the audience. Any other questions?
Well, I should clarify, the police chief is using all of those, the Facebook and the other things it has for some time. The other thing is regarding the staff and asking them about things. When the ICMA report occurred, there was quite a bit of that when they met with staff. But you're looking at it is in terms of how are they communicating that?
Yes, yes.
As they go about, out in their daily lives?
Correct, yes.
That's a different thing, okay. Councilwoman Bellamy, did I see that you...
Yeah, I read the nine-page plan.
Okay.
I saw this series of tactics. What's your goal in this? I mean, that's my question, because the city manager says this is going to help us with economic development. I know what economic development plans look like. This ain't it. This is a series of tactics. And now you say, well, we can't really have a plan because we have to do a communication audit. You do communication audits for a whole other kind of thing. So what is it you think you're being hired to do?
Well, the main purpose, the primary focus and the short focus, the first six months, is to work on the communication point, the initial part. During that first six months, it's also engage the business community to see if they'll be engaged and sharing with you on the economic development, identifying their particular needs, okay? You do have an economic development person that's involved in doing some of this work, okay? I'm not going to be stepping on their toes. But the economic development portion of fact is engaging business, as they've done in Lansing with LEAP, as they did in the city of Pittsburgh, creating a one-voice mechanism. On Mackinac Island, that's what the governor's doing with the business community in the southeast Michigan region, is reaching out to business to share in your engagement. The other goal is the fact, the people are saying that they want to stay here versus leave, especially younger families.
Okay, but what, what is your, what is your plan?
The plan? Well, first of all, it's begin to develop those mechanisms of outreach, identify those messages that work, and develop those mechanisms of beginning to incorporate the community to be involved in government itself.
So how do we know, what do we measure in six months so that we know that you've been successful?
Well, the thing that you measure is anybody in communications would be as one, if you wanted to spend money, you could do another survey, attitudes changed, how many engagements have we've done? Is the website up and running, okay?
The website's already up and running.
Well, the change is the improvements, okay? In any communication audit, there's a description. We have to create the messages and themes, are those done? Okay? The second thing at communications, creating the delivery mechanism of those things. Right now, are we effectively, all departments using one message and theme on all the particular issues? Have we brought on business to support you in your, in your vision? What are they doing with you?
I'm still, Mr. Sarpolos, I still, and like I say, I started out negative when I got two-thirds of the way through the proposal and there were errors in it from a communications specialist, but people of Troy expect me to work my way through it, so I'm trying to get it out there.
I'm sorry, my editors, you know, who do this for a living...
It doesn't matter why it happened. You're a communications specialist, it came to us ugly. So I appreciate your apology, but it doesn't help your case.
I don't know what's wrong, I have to point that out because I have a number of people reviewed it to do this for a living, for reviewing stuff, and they didn't catch that, so I would be glad to see the errors. I thank you for that opportunity to do that. The bottom line is the fact is that any communication strategy is, is you create a strategy, getting out your message and engagement.
But what I thought we would get tonight and what I expected from the direction we gave to the city manager was find a company to give us a communication strategy, which to me is a plan, not a tactic, not a laundry list of tactics, not a laundry list of tools. It is a plan. I want to position Troy to be. I want to develop the mechanisms for you to get to. I haven't seen any vision from your nine-page document at all.
Well, first of all, those things have to be done before you can reach that. You have to, you have to do the audits, you have to do the evaluation, we have to find out what the public views the city's vision to be and match it with what you want to achieve. To give you statements right now would be erroneous.
I think not, when you say that you want to base this on our vision and goals. So I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else have some questions for Mr. Sarpolos? Councilman Slater?
Maybe you could respond to the citizen that said that you're not from this area, so you wouldn't know this area or you wouldn't know what Troy is about. Maybe you could respond to that.
I did not live specifically in Troy, but I lived in Macomb County, in the Detroit area. My daughters live in the area, my brother lives over in this area. Family, I worked in different businesses and consulted them, I have done that. Done that, number of, had a two-year surveys over the last decade and a half, okay? Personally, live here? No. And the answer of getting somebody else, that you're more welcome to do that. Most things that I've looked at and evaluated involved in that, that's a two-to-five-year program, to change physically a public opinion, it's not going to happen overnight. But the goal of this proposal was to begin to create the process by which you can get to move people in the right direction, and attitude, and engagement, and getting business involved, okay? And that's all done. In Lansing, they spent two years of doing the research and evaluation focusing not only what the city wanted, but business wanted, and the community leaving education. We have not done that here in the city of Troy. In order to move the city forward, we all have to work as stakeholders, as a group, not as an individual. And we need to find out what the roadblocks are. But to start on a plan without knowing the roadblocks and barriers is not a proper process, okay?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I guess this is one of the issues that I have, and I know that we had an opportunity and sought you out and asked you to submit a proposal.
Yes.
Because we've worked with you before.
Yes.
And you were providing us valuable information.
Yes.
You shed light on issues that we have, maybe some things that we didn't want to address on council, that there were, there's, there are community members that don't feel like we're communicating well, they don't feel that we're producing the results that they want to see. So I saw the benefit absolutely of having you put forward a proposal, but I think that the issue that I have is that I was hoping that we wouldn't have to create the wheel. You have had some opportunity to interact with not only our citizens, but our staff, you've worked with city management, and we've spent, you know, considerable amount of time going over the results. And the only thing that really concerns me is that I understand the process takes a period of time, and we're looking for an overhaul and we're looking to, you know, move even further into the 21st century and make a lot of changes. But I, I feel like it's, we're kind of, we're starting, you know, we're starting from scratch, we're reinventing the wheel. And I was looking for, if it was going to be someone that we've worked with before, it's someone that we've built some relationships with, that's interacted with staff, that's really asked some very direct questions of our citizens, and then was able to extrapolate the information to give us really a citywide view of how people view us.
Which you're asking me for them to actually produce the document that usually is done with the client within the first two weeks to 30 days.
Okay.
Okay? This is a proposal, what needs to be done and should be done, okay? You're asking me to do the work before I was even hired to produce the document, which might be 30, 40 pages of messaging and the themes. I don't know if any company would go, here's your plan, here's your message, here's your themes, and spend the month prior to a proposal. I had less than a several days to put this together in order to do this, okay? Because I was asked, because there was other people submitted, and they were saying they weren't totally happy with the proposal, I put in my own proposal. But I wanted to be sure that the metrics, the basis of setting up an effective program are in place. That's what I outlined in all these different documents. These are the methods that must be in place in order for you to be successful. Just to put out press releases and put out messages and themes is not going to move the public. This is grassroots, this is message development, this is a campaign, not to win at the ballot on taxes, but this is a campaign. I've been in four, over 400 campaigns, I've worked with other cities. Okay, I don't know of any city that says, "Here, vendor, give me your message to hear that you're going to do." No, there's a process that has to go through. I have not talked to every city department, I have not worked with every employee, I don't know your roadblocks, I don't know what they're saying out there, I don't know if business is willing to buy into this. This local chamber of commerce only has about 600 members out of 6,100 members here, they're having problems. What's wrong with their message, and they suppose they believe here? They come out here and just say that, okay, from the polling and message, here's what you should be saying and doing, anybody would do that, would be lying to you that that's necessarily going to work. Okay? I could have done, I could have gone to a webpage and steal messages from other cities, but that's not the point here. You want the message that's really going to work, what's going to move. And messaging has to match what the word "on the street" is. Okay? Engaging the public, what do they believe the city is going to be? If we put out something that they don't believe in, they're going to reject your messaging. One D's been putting out a message about Detroit for how many years? They spent millions of dollars, big firms, and it hasn't worked. Because the fact is that they're doing nothing grassroots. So anybody can produce a mysterious of messages and say this and do that, and put this out, whatever, like that, but you're never going to, communications to me is, it has to be metrics. Traditional PR has no metrics, they just say, "Say something," put out a press release. Has to develop. And to say, "Here, here's a proposal, here's a plan like that," well, that'd been great, that'd have been easy. Then I could easily charge you a couple thousand dollars, but that's not what you're asking me to spend my hours on, two to three days a week here in Troy to do, just to give you something on a sheet of paper. This requires work, this means going out and meeting with the media, meeting with business owners, okay? Why aren't they covering, why aren't they doing positive stories? Okay? If we do a general opinion survey of the employees, and they come back, wow, their attitude with telling neighbors is wrong, how do we change that? Because if we put something out in messaging campaign that the employees are saying is not true, then who's going to buy your messaging? This is a multi-layer approach, this is issue management. This is not just the pablum and word saying, okay? You know, we hear what Congress tries to, or in the President, they say messages, but they don't mean anything, because they're not part of what the grassroots is. I'm not trying to have you say something just to say something. That's too easy. Anybody could have produced that. But anything, any place I've ever worked, we have to identify what are the problems, what needs to be changed, that's engagement. That's just, here's what you do from day one, two, and three. I haven't talked to anybody, we have not engaged everybody, but this is engagement, the media, the business committee, the youth, the families. Why isn't the fact that we have 300 families here, but they don't vote? Well, that's got to be part of the communication plan. I have not talked to all those families that don't vote, or don't participate. Okay?
Anyone else have questions? Or, Councilman Slater?
Maybe I could, for Councilwoman Beltrame, is there a period of time that we could give to come back to us with a plan that would be, that would help satisfy some of your concerns, or not?
I used to think yes, but quite honestly, I feel like, and that's why you saw me leafing through these nine pages, quite honestly, I think we've been offered a bait and switch. Was supposed to be a communication strategy, economic stability plan, and now I hear that the bulk of the first significant period of time is going to be placed in doing a communication audit. There's no mention of a communication audit in here at all.
There is, there is, maybe with departments in their head, there is, definitely there is.
It is tacit, it is not significant as part of this. And what you have just said to us is, "You can't do anything, you can't tell us anything." You think, this proposal says, "I'm kind of going to try and do something," that's what it says. And what you're telling me now is that you'll beef this up after you get the contract and do a communication audit, but that's going to take time, and it's going to take two to five years to really change public opinion, so you're really not sure what you can do. But when I ask you what you're positioning us to do, you don't give me an answer, because you say you have to do a communication audit.
Well, the vision of the fact is to have people start moving back into the city, especially the younger families, basically be sure that business stays here, and you track businesses, not only people come here to work here, but also live here. And you, obviously you were not at the study session, but we went over the issues that are facing here. You lost roughly 3,000 middle-aged families with kids out of the city. Okay? So the part of this process, the fact to be sure that you get those people back, and people over here not leave anymore. Also the fact to be sure that businesses stay here or want to grow here. And also, we have to find out what business needs in a matching process. You develop an economic plan, if it doesn't match what business wants to do here, it's going to fail. That's part of the business engagement, to see what business wants and needs.
So that's your goal? That's your goal, is to position us to attract and retain business and young families?
Yes, and it's part of, I think I even stated more specifically.
Madam Mayor, I think on page-
Councilman, I'm Ms. Tim Curran.
I think on page 111 it says, "Start identifying, you know, why I live in Troy and why I do business in Troy," looking specifically at that. But on 111, I suppose what I was most interested in was the city communications being coordinated, effective, efficient, and so on. That's really where things have been falling down. We don't have a coherent message. We don't, haven't taken the time to figure out with a leaner staff, taking that audit of employees, where they are, the direction that we're going, the whole transition piece that wasn't done, those are things that have been a concern.
I don't disagree with any of that.
After the ICMA report-
I just am not impressed with this proposal.
Okay, you're more than welcome to your opinion. I was given a limited amount of time, and I responded, and the time was given to me.
I appreciate that.
Okay? And that's fine.
Mayor?
Councilman Harlach?
Just to kind of move this thing along, Mr. Sarpolos, would you be willing to participate in an RFP process if we go down that road?
Sure, as long as the RFP, the bid that you're requesting is not underbidding the true cost of doing this project. Okay, I think it's very important that whoever you, when you put out the bid, you need to get some budget parameters, because my conversation with some other people who were willing to participate, who were not willing to participate in the bid process with Troy, because they felt that the bid process or the cost that they estimated you were going to cap it at was unattainable, what they could achieve the work.
I think that's something valid to take into consideration.
Yeah, no, I, no, I was, as a matter of fact, the city mayor would allege that I was reticent originally putting anything in. Okay? Because I was concerned the fact that you did have a tight budget. And when I looked at the budget I put into the fact is, how many hours would it take, along with my staff, not just me, to put that into that, and also what it would take to do the engagement? The original proposal was six months for me, it wasn't two years or five years, it was only nine, it was six months. Because the fact that we couldn't achieve any success on some benchmarks, on the messaging and key messages, then you shouldn't be hiring anybody, and it's going to be a hard task. The other thing was very clear, that I was not going to be working on any mileage campaign in November or August, that was very clear. So I put my own restrictions on myself. The way I came up with the process is, what would it take to put on people to assist with the website? How many hours, the engagement? Because of the projects I've worked in the past. Okay? And to spend two days, and also my proposal, there would be no billing for mileage for me, there'd be no health costs, no retirement benefit, no. That price was all-inclusive, that's the other thing, that you're not being nickel-and-dime. When you put out bids, RFPs, they're going to have fine lines in there, they're going to charge for gas mileage and other material things. This was basically, this is the price that you pay, except other production costs, this was not an additional billing, nickel-and-diming you down the road. The 9500 was the cost. Okay? I think that's very important when you look at that price. Because I've been in projects too, I've hired people and that type of thing, and you know like that. Okay, here's your base price, oh, but you've got gas mileage, you've got travel expenses, you've got this type of thing. No, this is a flat price, and it's capped. So there isn't good, there is no mission creep, there is no budget creep. Okay? And working with the city manager and your committee affairs director, okay, they're my bosses, they're assigning tasks, what has to be achieved first, second, and third, I have, you know, I have not done that. I've outlined the tasks that I know that need to be done, and remember, I'm trying to squeeze in what should be done over two years into six months, and identify those things that need to be accomplished. Okay? Which could be changed. But 9500 is a cap also, just to let you know, as you put out RFPs, it's not going to be stretched on, you know, that's the other thing you need to let them know, that there has to be an all-inclusive cost, and that type of thing.
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, I'm just confused, I hear what you're saying about the all-inclusive cost, but I'm looking at paragraph six, out-of-pocket expenses, costs, and, you know, third-party costs, there would be other costs.
Well, if you want to produce a mailing, I'm not going to pay for that.
But mileage outside of southeast Michigan would be 50 cents a mile.
Well, yeah, but that means if you want me to go to Pittsburgh, or Cleveland, or something like that, I mean, the point being is sometimes people want to do studies, okay? They want to go engage in Pittsburgh, or Cleveland, or that type of thing. Okay, now, my project client is Troy in the great southeast Michigan. Okay?
Any other questions? Thank you, we'll have some more discussion here.
Well, there's no problem.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming, I know ever since you were elected to council, and I've mentioned this too, you've indicated that you felt that we should be doing marketing with Troy.
Yes.
And I was interested in the kind of marketing that you envisioned for us to do that we've not been doing. And so I wondered if we could, because to me, doing a communication strategy has to do with marketing, but also has to do with receiving information as well as having it go out.
Yeah. We really haven't done marketing, and we've had, you know, a communication staff, we had a marketing staff, we don't have it anymore, but we've lost that opportunity with the staff we had, I think we missed the boat there. I think it's because we really didn't prioritize what we wanted, and maybe that's a lack of direction from the council. But I thought we have a lot to offer here in Troy, and we're well-kept secret, I think, we're still a jewel in southeast Michigan, and all of Michigan, and a lot to offer, but we don't promote it, we don't communicate it, and how do we communicate it? We can communicate it globally, we could be partnering with Oakland County, when they go on their ships to China and where else around the world. And we could be going along and promoting Troy there to try to encourage businesses to come here. But we really haven't done that, we've just set in our own little world and not gone outside. I'm not the expert on marketing, I think people are much more qualified than me, but those are some of the things that I thought we should be doing that we're not doing. Using the resources that we already had, the marketing people, the communication people that we had on staff at one time weren't used to do that, and we've not capitalized on opportunities that we've had to go on global trips with Oakland County to try to attract businesses, and possibly working closer with Automation Alley to attract businesses. I think we really haven't done that, we've had opportunities, but I think we didn't do it because we were pretty successful the way we were, and we were living in the past. And we didn't have to do that at one time, but now the world has changed, and we just need to be more aggressive. I'm not sure that the proposal that Mr. Sarpolos gave us tonight is what we're looking for, but I think he did have a short period of time, and I give him credit for what he did, thank you for your time and effort, but I think we're missing the boat there. I think this council needs to probably step back again. We've done our vision and our goals, we need to step back again and look at what we really want and what we need as a city. And there are probably some things we can still do internally, and then be very specific as to what we want an outside firm to do, not let them come to us and tell us what they can do. We need to be specific and understand what we want first before we ask someone to give us a deliverable.
Now, you're talking about marketing to businesses or getting businesses to come here, what about marketing to-
Residents?
Residents, residents that want to come here, or residents that are looking to say, "Do I want to stay in Troy?" Our population, according to the census, has stayed relatively flat. We've maybe lost people, but we've gained some people. Do you think that we should be doing something in that venue also?
As far as young people, I think our students have stayed basically the same, but it's because of schools of choice. I think people come from other communities, because they still see that Troy has a lot to offer, that they can't get in other communities. But yes, I'm sure there are things we can do to market to residents and to attract the younger families here, and it's, you know, we need to promote more of some of the programs we had in the past, we didn't do a very good job of maybe promoting outside of Troy, what we had to offer as far as Troy Parks and Recs. I think we had tremendous amount of resources there to exploit and to market to families. But again, we've missed the boat there. So we have to think, probably drop back, regroup, determine as a council what we want to do. But certainly, I know that we've got a lot to offer families and from all around the world, to try to attract them here to Troy, we've just not done our due diligence in doing that.
Mayor?
Councilman Harlach?
You know, one thing, I think it was Councilwoman Beltrame, who provided a demographic summary from the census, I think it came through SEMCOG or the census, I can't recall, but one consistent theme, when you go through and look for it, you know, I was looking for two things, and it was almost nonexistent. One, I was looking for cities with a population increase, and two, I was looking for cities that had an increase in either the younger population or the number of children in households. And we have to realize that a couple of things are going on. We are a, we're in a pea in a very large pod, but also the entire paradigm has changed, we're in a new era. And what does that mean? Well, that means, well, people go where there are jobs, and if you're retired, you don't necessarily have to go where the jobs are, because by nature, you're retired. So the number one thing to get young people in the region, and to be honest with you, I don't think we can say that we draw the line at Dequinder, or we draw the line at South Boulevard, because economic development and jobs do not necessarily stop at the borders. I mean, how many of us, you know, work outside of Troy, or we have neighbors that work outside of Troy, or businesses that employ people here in Troy and they live somewhere else? We are all in this together. From the standpoint of economic development, I would actually like to see us do something on a more collaborative nature, perhaps, with an economic development team that's shared across different communities. Because I think we can all pool our resources, and we can all benefit from that. You know, we each may have different needs that fluctuate with the calendar, but I think we actually do need to wake up and realize that things are different, that people are having fewer children, they're getting married older, this is a nationwide thing. The only, if you really want to have young families, you attract immigrants, that's what you do. Because as a matter of fact, the one community that has an increase, excuse me, a demographic profile that matches that is Hamtramck, with their Bangladeshi and Albanian populations, and they have very large families, by the way, as well as the Polish families that are still moving to Hamtramck. So to make a long story short, I think that what Councilman Fleming says makes sense, we actually need to know where we as a council want to go with this. I reiterate the issue with economic development, and I think we also need to look at priorities too. If you're going to talk about $114,000 a year, or somewhere in that nature, I think public safety is important, and I think our residents have told us that. Before we start spending money on telling our residents what this city has to offer, because those resources are out there already with the website, Troy Today, and so on and so forth, we need to put that money into road, into winter road maintenance. And that, by the way, will go a long way towards making people feel better. We all are upset about the way things are. We're upset the economy's bad, nobody has money, everybody's in debt, and communities have less to do, to spend, and it's just the way it is. But we can do our part by at least responding to our residents who want us to prioritize public safety, including road maintenance up at the top of that list.
Further comments on I-13?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Slater?
I think we maybe veered off a little bit here, and maybe we need to come back, we need to replace the economic development portion for Mr. Zurlag. So we have to find a way to do that. Because that's very, I think we all agreed, listening to everybody tonight, that that's very important to us. So we have to find a way to replace that. I feel bad for Mr. Sarpolos, because I think he actually got hurt by offering a proposal.
I feel bad for Mr. Sarpolos, because I think he actually got hurt by offering a proposal. And the other people maybe were smart enough not to do that, and didn't get caught by us here tonight.
Not to interrupt you, but I, I've said this before, I was asked to do something, and I did it a short period of time, we should, we should get something, because I believe that you have a great city.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I think from what I'm getting, a consensus here tonight is, we want to do something, but we need to find a way to do it. And I really think we need to do an RFP. Because we're still building trust here with this council. And as much as I appreciate the effort tonight, I really think we need an RFP. And we need to delineate what we're looking for, because maybe we're not communicating that to Mr. Zurlag properly. So I, I think we, I think we just need to do an RFP, and if it comes back the way it did, but maybe we need to be a little more specific.
And that's why you were saying that you were looking more at option B, because you felt that was going in that direction.
Correct. I.
How do the rest of you feel about doing option B and that, instead of option A at this point? Councilman Beltramini?
Madam Mayor, I, as I said the first time I spoke, I agree with everything that you and the Mayor Protem said before I spoke. We need a communications person. And I think that outside is typically cheaper. We don't pay benefits, we don't have legacy costs, whether it's Mr. Sarpolos, or a retired marketing executive, or an MBA grad out of work. Those kinds of people don't cost us legacy costs. And it's not the kind of thing that you can just hire anyone off the street to do as well. There are skills involved. And, and I appreciate that. So I believe that that, coupled with our need for absolute transparency in everything we do these days, does require an RFP process. And it may in fact come out that Mr. Sarpolos is the only bidder, or says, not even I want this job anymore. You know, we don't know how that's going to come out, but I, I think that we owe it to the people of Troy to at least look at that. I don't disagree with Councilman Fleming, when he says, you know, what do we want? And so I would extrapolate out of that, that we do want to position ourselves to realize our vision.
Yeah.
And through that, the goal of economic development and fiscal responsibility, those two goals should be the first to bring us there, from my standpoint. I mean, that's where I would go as a priority. But I, I think that we need to have some conversation around that, a little tiny bit, maybe even after this meeting, but, you know, 10 or 15 minutes of just where do we think we want to get, so that when John sends out an RFP, he knows that, where we're going.
In option B, it indicates that the process may take up to 120 days to complete. Now, why would it take that long? And can you do anything about doing a shorter process? Mr. Zurlag?
Well, let me ask Susan Leirstein, our purchasing director, who also works closely with our office for change management, and develops all the RFPs when we decide to take a look at departments, to determine whether or not they should be privatized, or remain in-house. And Susan is an honors graduate at Oakland University. So Susan, do you want to explain, why don't you explain two things to us? The first is, do you have enough information now to actually develop an RFP? Or do you need more specificity from the governing body? And the second question is, how much time would you need, once you get that specificity, assuming that you do?
We will need more specifications. We certainly don't have enough to develop our RFP from, at this point in time.
Based on what was said at the table?
Pardon me?
Based on what was said by council thus far?
Yes.
Okay.
We would definitely need some more input from city council on what they would like to have included, what's important to them, how they want the plan to look, what metrics you want to have in place, what kind of reporting, I mean, all of those things need to be developed. Up to 120 days, that's the extreme case. We generally can, an RFP process always takes longer than a standard bid. And I would say probably at least 75 days, from the time I would, we would start this process. And this includes your time to tell us what it is you want. This is all part of the development of the RFP. So from the time we start working with you to figure out what it is, to the time it goes on the street, it's got to be out usually two to three weeks. I mean, as Sarpolos is right, there's just not enough time to do it in a couple of days. So in order to get a comprehensive strategy, you're going to want it out for a couple of weeks. Then it comes back, there's an evaluation that has to take place, I mean, these things all take time. So 75 days is probably the least amount of time it's going to take you to get something in place.
And that would be from the time that we have the specifics on what goes into the RFP?
That includes getting some of the specifics. I mean, we can work on those. I mean, if it takes, you know, up to 30 days, I think, to gather that information, that's okay. We can still accomplish what you want within the 75 days.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Well, I know Councilmember Beltramini said, well, maybe after this meeting, we'd spend some time talking about what this would be. Might as well just do, do something right now, before we finish. And I guess, and Councilmember Beltramini may have experienced the same thing, but currently, going around the state at any, for any kind of function, both regionally and statewide, an introduction that says, I'm from Troy, is, oh.
Poor thing.
Yeah. Oh, what's it like? And I've heard Councilman Beltramini say many times, it's okay, you know, in trying to say that. That's not what we need right now. That's our problem, is the black eye syndrome. That is truly a huge problem, both for people who, who may have considered us to move their families here. As Councilmember Fleming points out, wonderful school system, there are seven wonderful school systems right around us. So again, we have to get out of that, oh, and be recognized again for the good things that we have done, which have been ongoing. Councilmember Fleming was glowing when he was talking about some of the great things about these, the city. That we still believe, the same way as Mr. Sarpolos said, I believe in the city, I believe in the wonderful things, but out there, within, not only regionally, but within the state, there is this, oh, don't want to go there, there's problems in Troy. And that's something that we need to address. Now, does that come out in a handy RFP? How does one go ahead and say that? I believe that when it says on this page, for example, increased knowledge of city council's vision, goals, plans, those were the things that we talked about when we gave direction. When we originally said to city management, here you go, develop the strategic plan, make this happen. But we've stagnated since that point. So are we equipped to develop this RFP as a council? That I'm not sure of. But what I recognize is that we don't have a good image right now, within our city, within our stakeholders, within this building itself. We have problems right here in River City. And we need to address those. And that was the idea of going out for a clear communication strategy. Multiple strategies in multiple sectors. And that's what I thought this addressed. But I wouldn't know any more than how to say more than that, than what came forward tonight.
One of the things that happened when we developed our vision statement and goals is that we wanted to communicate that to people, and also say what a lot of those things meant in there. So that's one thing we want to do. We want to be able to communicate what the vision is in a positive manner. The other thing that I think that this council wants to do is to engage, and there's a sheet on the table here asking for that, engage the business community in finding out from them, having a discussion, because some of them came to the public engagement sessions, but it wasn't strictly a business one, it was residents and business mixed in. This would be just meeting with the business committee. So I think we need to do that, to get some information from those business people that want to come to that. So that's coming up for a resolution there. That I think we need to have. The other thing is, I think we need to have a plan for constantly sending things to the print media and the multimedia, the TV, radio people, whether it's in press releases, you know, that go out, things that are happening in Troy, things that we used to be able to do, when we had enough staff to do it. Okay? I think that's an important part of the communication. And I think that when the citizens were saying they wanted more communication for us, from us, they were missing that, just like they were missing things about snowplowing, they're missing things about the library, they're missing things about the police department. You know, they want the old way, they want what they had before, but they're not realizing that if you want what you had before, it takes a certain amount of money to have those things. Then I think they started getting the idea and the picture. And so we addressed the one issue about the library, and that's going to come up in August. But I think we still need to address these other things, and get it out there to people, and not just assume that they know. Because, for example, until we got the information that only 13% of the people get their information from watching us on TV, we probably thought we had a bigger audience than that. But it's the same people that are doing that, and it's the same people that get it from the website, but not everybody gets it from there. The one place they said, I think the report said 32% got it, was from the Troy Times. That's because it's delivered to every home, every week. So we need to figure out a way, besides having the reporters write stories about us, getting information to them, so it could go there. So that's what I would see in a communication strategy. Does that help a little bit? Susan? Okay. Mr. Zurlag?
I think what would help immensely would be to have a resolution passed identifying the key components of a communication strategy. We would then frame the wording around those elements in your resolution, and see what we get back.
Okay. You're suggesting we do that this evening?
Yes, I am. Last meeting, I was asked to get a communication strategy, and I brought a communication strategist. And so thank you, you did a great job in a short timeframe. But apparently, that's, that wasn't what council wanted. And so as your manager, I would love more specificity, so that we don't waste your time, nor staff's time, nor communication company's time, in responding to what you want. So a resolution would be great. Anytime you want to give it to me, we'll jump on it the next day.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
I know Councilmember Beltramini may not agree, but I think the scope of work that delineates some of those, what we call tactics. I'm, I am not really expecting someone on the RFP to come back with the strategy already composed, to be honest with you, because I know that we need work within. But some of the things that we just articulated right here at the table are on page two of the yellow agreement, and it includes the scope of work, the multiple channels, the tools, the messages, engage in key print, and so on and so forth. Some of those things are things that I think would be fit ideally into the RFP. And maybe if Councilmember Beltramini might flesh out more what she was looking for.
I'm not looking for tools. I'm looking for a vision. It's that simple. And that's, I mean, any social science major or a marketing major can give you a list of tools. I, I want to know what the end goal is with those tools. That is a strategy, that is a plan. The rest of it is tactics. Now, if the rest of you are more comfortable with tactics. I, I find that you hire a professional to implement through tactics, if you want to give them where your goal is, I mean, I expected that as a strategy for Mr. Sarpolos, but if, if that's what, after this discussion, we need to do, then yes, we need to do that. We need to position Troy to be the go-to community for the future, for both residents and business, while providing a safe, well-rounded environment within the city. How do we communicate that we're doing that?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I think we also need to have something on economic development in that strategy also. Is there a job description for that position, Mr. Zurlag?
Yes, there is.
Let's also work our goals.
Okay.
Well, the things that Councilwoman Beltramini just mentioned, and the things that Councilman Slater just asked about, are all on the page with our vision and statement and goals.
Right.
Right there. So we want to develop a scope of work that tells us how we're going to communicate that to all those we want to communicate to, whether they're residents, business people, people in, in general.
Mayor?
I think that's our vision, and what we need to do is have somebody say, how